Great. Thanks, Joe, and happy Friday, everyone. Tommy, if you can share the slides, I think we can get started. What we're going through today is CDA's 2024 CDBG funding priorities. And it's this is a process that we go through every year. There's not a ton of new information this year. But this is a critical part of our citizen participation process whereby we solicit input and and receive feedback and incorporate feedback prior to releasing our RFP, which I'm sure is what folks are actually excited about and will be released on August 7. But this is an important preliminary step whereby we've shared and we've published our funding priorities. And we want to hear from you to to hear anything that we've missed or other funding priorities that we ought to consider adding or changing. So with that, let's move on to the next slide. I provided a brief overview of the purpose of the public hearing, although we'll get into that a little bit more. But then I'm going to provide an overview. And my name is Noel Feffer. I serve as Executive Director of the Community Development Administration. And I'm going to provide an overview of CDBG and home funds, their eligible uses and activities, so that you all understand the constraints and the opportunities that are available as we devise these funding priorities. We'll also provide an overview of the citizen participation process and then share the priorities themselves and then welcome questions and comments from the public. Next slide. So just a little overview of CDA and our mission here. We serve as a clearinghouse for a variety of federal, state, and local funds for the city of St. Louis and work especially closely with HUD. Everything that we're going to be talking about today is HUD-funded formula grants. And we're charged by Mayor Jones with leveraging these federal funds to drive the city's economic justice agenda to empower, develop, and transform St. Louis by reversing decades of disinvestment and making investments that begin to heal longstanding divides. And if we move on to the next slide, we'll share that CDA is really proud and it's a privilege to partner with a wide array of public and private partners in this work. And we do everything ranging from youth and senior services to affordable housing development to a variety of other investments in our unhoused community towards economic development, towards public facilities and others. Next slide. However, before we can spend any federal funds, we need to go through the federal process. And what the federal process essentially requires, among other things, is substantial citizen input. And so this starts actually very early on with a five-year planning process. And we're currently in the final year of our 2020 through 2024 consolidated plan. And we'll soon begin the planning process for the 2025 to 2029 five-year period and welcome your engagement through that process, which we're really excited about. But the consolidated plan identifies our goals and objectives. And it's a data-informed and community-driven process. And then what we do after we have that five-year plan in place is we submit annual action plans to HUD where we tell them 45 days before the beginning of the program year. We've got our five-year plan, and this is how we're going to implement the five-year plan in this calendar year. And so we submit that action plan 45 days before the year. We then spend the year implementing the plan, subject to HUD approval. And then 90 days after the end of that year, we submit a CAPR, a Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report, where we tell HUD what we did and how it went. So that's essentially the process in every step. The consolidated plan, the annual action plan, the CAPR, we are required to conduct public, get solicit public input, hold public hearings. Everything is noticed in the paper multiple times. And so we really are committed. We're required to do this, but we're committed to harnessing this as an opportunity to really engage in an ongoing dialogue with our public and private partners and in particular with our current and prospective subrecipients. Next slide. So what are CDBG and home funds and what can we use them for? CDBG funds, first of all, all HUD funds, we should actually say, all HUD funds need to fulfill at least one of three national objectives. They need to either benefit low-to-moderate-income households and individuals. And those are defined as households under 80% area median income. And you can find those area median income tables on the city website. And I'll just share that as a good rule of thumb, it's worth thinking of 80% AMI for an individual as hovering around $50,000 and 80% AMI for a family of four hovering around $75,000. The the figures were just recently updated, so that's not very precise. But you can find the up-to-date tables on the CDA website. So that's one national objective. A second national objective is elimination of slums and blight. And this requires a blighting study and in order to, for it to be applicable. And then the final category, although this really requires, it's rarely invoked, is urgent need. And this is really in response to a disaster. And we have received a substantial allocation of CDBG disaster recovery funds in response to the July 22 floods, although the process for that is separate from this one and will take a longer time to unfold. So with that in mind, that's the overview of how HUD funds need to be used to fulfill these national objectives. However, specific eligible activities and things we funded in the past include youth services, senior services, expanding access to food, workforce development programs, homeless services, healthcare services, childcare services, offender reentry support programs, violence prevention programs, fair housing, financial literacy and counseling, and other services. Unfortunately, however, there is a cap on the amount of funds that we are able to allocate towards public services. Each year, our allocation is around $18 million in CDBG funds. And we're only allowed to allocate 19% of that towards public services. So that's about three and a half million. And in fact, public services is both one of our most popular areas where we receive applications and also one of our highest impact areas where the programs have the most bang for their buck. And so in order to expand our investment in public services, something we are currently working on with HUD and we'll talk a little bit further down the slides about, is reestablishing the city of St. Louis Neighborhood Revitalization Strategy Areas. And any public service within this NERSA, as they're called, Neighborhood Revitalization Strategy Area, will provided by a CUBDO, a community-based development organization, will not contribute towards the public service cap and will be exempt from that cap, essentially allowing us to increase our investment in public services. Additionally, eligible activities include economic development activities. Activities we funded in the past include microenterprise loans and supports, economic empowerment supports, business development loans, and facade improvement programs. And these are in deep partnership with the St. Louis Development Corporation, which administers almost all of these programs, with the exception of the microenterprise loan program, which is administered by Justin Peterson. Next slide is public facilities. No, sorry, I said next slide, but I meant next bullet, if we can go back. Public facilities include early childcare centers, health facilities, street and sidewalk improvements, recreation centers, and other public improvements. And we're also including a link here to a document where any interested applicants can find a detailed list of HUD, of CDBG eligible activities, what is and what is not allowed. And you'll note that there are significant constraints, even though there are also significant opportunities. Home funds, on the other hand, may only be used to provide housing to benefit persons of low and moderate income. Next slide. So activities eligible, you can actually skip through these next three slides. They shouldn't be on. Thank you. So the timeline that we are, because I just synthesized all that information. The 2024 CDBG funding cycle involves the following steps. And we've posted this on our website and I'll go through it here. We are currently holding our public hearing for funding priorities, and we posted the timeline a few weeks ago. We will issue our CDBG non-housing production RFP on August 7, 2023. So that is the opportunity for any interested private parties who want to work with CDA as subrecipients to apply with their proposals for public services, for economic development activities, for public improvements, et cetera. And that'll be open from August 7, 2023 to September 7, 2023. And we'll also be providing a virtual overview of the RFP on August 7 and providing a capacity building training where we essentially provide an overview of the best practices that successful subrecipients use and our expectations and requirements in terms of financial management processes, reporting, and record keeping in order to to use these funds. And I'll note that all of these funds require monthly financial and programmatic reporting. A financial report tells us how the money is being spent. The programmatic report tells us the outputs and outcomes that the funds are generating. So proposals are due to CDA on September 7, 2023. And then we will be posting funding recommendations on October 6, 2023. Those funding recommendations will come in the form of an annual action plan and a board bill. The board bill will actually include the formal appropriation of the funds. And those will all be filed and introduced on October 6, 2023. Next, the first HUDs committee will be held on October 9, the week of October 9, 2023. And that's really subject to the HUD schedule and the HUD chairwoman's decision. And then assuming it pass, it is, it is recommended by the committee and passed out of committee with a due pass recommendation, it'll be second read at the Board of Alderman on October 13, 2023, perfected on October 20, 2023, and third read and final pass on October 27, 2023. We'll then hold a second public hearing as required by our citizen participation plan and submit our annual action plan to HUD by November 15, 2023, as required 45 days before the beginning of the program year, which in our case is also the calendar year. Next slide. So as I mentioned before, CDA encourages and HUD requires citizen participation at all stages of the funding process. And right now, the the stage in the process we're at is the stage before issuing the RFP, where we are soliciting input on funding priorities. So here we're just saying, here's what we're planning to prioritize. We want your input. And then on August 7, we will release an RFP reflecting that input. And we encourage you to submit written comments or suggestions to us either here in this hearing or in writing to CDA at 1520 Market Street, Suite 2000, or via email at cda@stlouis-mo.gov. And we'll be accepting written comments through August 5, 2023. Next slide. So our funding priorities, as detailed on this document, were made available and were posted on the city website on July 17. We posted an advertisement in the St. Louis American saying that these were available on July 13, 2023. And again, we'll be taking public comments through August 5. And these funding priorities, as I mentioned before, are also consistent with and informed by the 2020 through 2024 consolidated plan, the five-year plan that we're currently in. And that was developed through a process including community-wide focus groups, a review of existing and active departmental plans, and federal CDBG statutes and regulations. And I will also note, as I mentioned previously, but I'll provide a little more detail, that we are just starting the process of developing our 2025 through 2029 consolidated plan. And to that end, we'll be releasing in the coming weeks RFPs procuring, seeking to procure and seeking proposals from qualified respondents for consolidated plan drafting services, as well as market value analysis development services. The market value analysis is a critical piece of our consolidated plan, which is required by HUD, which involves a detailed assessment of the city of St. Louis housing market. And then finally, the the consolidated plan drafting services will also include an analysis of impediments to fair housing. Next, and so we're really excited to go through this process and look forward to engaging with the community even more deeply over the course of the coming year, because that consolidated plan will be due on November 15, 2024. So a year and a couple months out from now, and we're starting that process now. Next slide. So with that in mind, what are our 2024 priorities for funding? Well, they're largely consistent, almost entirely consistent with what they have been historically. And our number one priority is affordable housing. We have listened to the community. We understand the critical need. We are following the data, which tells us that the city of St. Louis has 140,000 households, of which 78,000 are tenant households, of whom about 36,500 are cost-burdened, of whom about 14,000 are evicted each year. So we understand the magnitude of the crisis facing low-to-moderate-income city families and seeking access to quality, safe, affordable housing and are committed to investing in a production of housing as diverse as our city. Second, our priority, a second priority, which again is consistent, is economic development. And here, this is really consistent with the city of St. Louis Economic Justice Plan, which involves, starts with economic empowerment. And that is that just building the housing, just investing in the built environment is not enough unless you're bringing up the community and investing in people. And that's why economic development, economic empowerment for job creation and retention and to invest in entrepreneurs and small businesses and to empower city residents is such a critical priority under this RFP and more broadly, under the city of St. Louis Economic Justice Action Plan. Next slide. A somewhat new priority for us this year is a focus on youth. And public services have always been a priority and remain a priority. But in particular, we really want to emphasize the critical challenges facing our cities' young people and the need to make upstream investments in youth in order to make long-term improvements to our city and strengthen our city and grow and progress as a city. And so we're really inviting applicants to to give us, share creative ideas about how they can share the city's youth, ranging from after-school and recreational programs, maternity care, support, supports, food and transit supports aimed at youth, youth jobs and workforce development, reentry services, and others. And we really believe that these investments will yield long-run returns in the form of improved high school graduation rates, increased employment and wages, reduced crime, and better health outcomes. So really encourage applicants, especially new applicants who haven't worked with us before, to to share their creative ideas for investing in youth. Next slide. Other priorities include planning, and these are all consistent with previous year priorities. But pursuant to this priority, we support the work of the Planning and Urban Design Agency in producing neighborhood plans and mapping products in general. And it is so critical, it's really, again, at the core of economic justice, is having strong neighborhood plans that empower residents and communities to drive development and set the development agenda and tell us which vacant lots, which vacant buildings do we need to stabilize? Which vacant lots do we need to prioritize for redevelopment or beautification or other activation? Another two priorities are homelessness services, including emergency shelter, transitional housing, rapid rehousing and prevention, as well as outreach. Again, here, we're really listening to priorities as they've been shared by the community, by our stakeholders, and recognizing the need to care for, I believe, at the most recent point in time count, over 1,000 unhoused individuals in the city of St. Louis, of whom a little over 200 are chronically unhoused and needing to invest in outreach and supportive services and housing for this community. So this remains a high priority. Next slide. In addition, as I discussed earlier, public facilities, public improvements, and infrastructure remain a priority. Really trying to balance, thoughtfully balance, the the mix of needed investments into both the built environment and into the social infrastructure, into the human capital, into empowerment of city residents, because it's not an either-or, we know we need both. And then finally, we do need administrative funds to administer all this work. And that includes CDA administration, includes city councilor administration, includes Planning Department and SLDC admin. Next slide. And then, as I mentioned earlier, we are reactivating and somewhat modifying the city's Neighborhood Revitalization Strategy Areas. We previously had these approved by HUD some time ago, but they fell out of of compliance in, I believe it was 2020. And so we are working to get these back online so that we can expand and exceed our public service cap. And so as you can see here, we have applied for and are awaiting a HUD decision on two Neighborhood Revitalization Strategy Areas. One is the the small red one on the near north side, just north of downtown St. Louis, is the Choice Neighborhoods Neighborhood Revitalization Strategy Area. The NERSA guidance explains that Choice Neighborhoods can more or less automatically be designated as Neighborhood Revitalization Strategy Areas, which is why that one is carved out. But in addition, we believe, based on the Economic Justice Index, which tracks poverty rates, educational outcomes, life expectancy, other health outcomes, internet access, and other variables, that all of North St. Louis can and should be designated as a Neighborhood Revitalization Strategy Area. And that broad geography will also be helpful from a compliance perspective and mean that programs don't need to be as narrowly targeted towards just one or two neighborhoods. We are also applying for a Neighborhood Revitalization Strategy Area in South St. Louis that will include certainly Dutch Town, Graboy Park, Mount Pleasant, and possibly other geographies. But we're still in the development process on that Neighborhood Revitalization Strategy Area. And critically, it's not sufficient for your service to be within a Neighborhood Revitalization Strategy Area to be exempt from the public services cap. In addition, the the entity must be a community-based development organization or CUBDO. And that is why simultaneously with the release of the CDBG RFP on August 7, we will also be releasing an updated application for interested nonprofits to apply to serve, to apply to be designated as a community-based development organization. And that will strongly strengthen applications if your entity is applying within a Neighborhood Revitalization Strategy Area and is designated as a CUBDO, because that again will allow us to exceed our public service cap and go beyond the $3.5 million to allocate additional funds towards public services, which we recognize is the highest, one of the highest needs. Next slide. That brings today's presentation to a conclusion. You can contact us at 1520 Market Street, Suite 2000, or at cda@stlouis-mo.gov. And at this point, we'll open it up to questions and comments. And you can type questions and comments into the chat. Or for those of us who have joined us in person, just raise your hand. We'll release that with the RFP. And we will hold another public hearing on the day that we release the RFP to go over it. All right, hearing no questions. I'll give everyone one more minute for any questions. Looks like we do have a raised hand.
Just giving you a heads up, the chat is disabled still.
Very helpful flag. Thank you, Mia. Right, because it's for hosts and panelists, and we need to make it so that attendees can also make comments. Can we just make the attendees panelists?
Tom, can you stop your share for a moment, share screen?
And Kevin, the in-person question was from Tommy, who asked how much funding was available under the RFP. And I explained that that would be released with the RFP. And the reason that I'm not giving a hard number right now is because we are in the process of evaluating which funds are available to be reprogrammed. How can nonprofits apply for the emergency disaster funds for homeowners? Would that be a home repair application? So with respect to the CDBG disaster recovery funds, that's really going to follow an entirely separate process. And that's because the notice of the Federal Register Notice was just published in the Federal Register in May. And the first step that we need to do is to produce our annual allocation, or not our annual in this case, our allocation plan, where we essentially tell HUD how we plan to use these funds. And CDBGDR regulations, disaster recovery regulations, require that this allocation plan include a pretty deep unmet needs analysis as well as consultation and citizen participation process. So basically, before we can make any funds available, we need to draft an allocation plan, including a data-driven unmet needs analysis that identifies what was the impact of the flooding? How was it met by FEMA and insurance? So basically, they don't want any duplication of benefits. So we need to demonstrate what was already, what has already been funded? What was the impact? What has been funded by FEMA? What has been funded by insurance in order to identify the unmet needs? Then create an allocation plan that responds to those unmet needs. Then solicit a ton of public input, which will be soliciting throughout the course of the process and holding stakeholder consultation conversations. But conduct that citizen participation, then submit that allocation plan to HUD, and then receive approval from HUD. And so it's a pretty lengthy process. And frankly, what other jurisdictions who have administered these funds in the past have told us is that you can typically, you'll typically have to wait one to two years from the date of the Federal Register Notice until you can start spending funds. So I know that's not what anyone wants to hear. It's not something that I'm particularly pleased about. But as we're learning about these CDBG disaster recovery funds, we're learning the process that's required, and it'll follow its own separate process and will keep you apprised about opportunities to apply for those funds as they become available. The question about the folks affected by the July 2023 storms is something that we are trying to get a straight answer on. I would very much like it, because we're seeing these these types of storms more and more frequently. It's not an isolated event. It's a pattern. I think it would make a whole lot of sense for us to be able to deploy disaster recovery funds to respond to respond to other disasters of a similar character and nature that may occur over the course of the grant. It's something we're exploring. Any other questions? The funding recommendations will be released at least housing, and I can't say that every single category, in particular home repair, might take a little longer. But neighborhood beautification, capacity building, proactive development and affordable housing will be released in early to mid-August, and hopefully, funding recommendations will be released early to mid-August and hopefully afford applicants an opportunity to plan accordingly. Any other questions? Going to give folks thirty more seconds, and then we'll call it a day. All right. I know that wasn't thirty seconds, but thank you, everyone, for your time. It doesn't look like we have any additional questions at this time. We appreciate your input. And there's, there will be a continued opportunity to provide this input through August fifth in writing, should you have any additional feedback. Thank you very much.